The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for August the 6th, 2019 is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with all its powers.
Thank you. Before I ask you to join me in a moment of silence, I want to just share with you that within the past week or so, we've seen the passing of two of our longtime residents, Ms. Claire Sutton and Mr. Tom Silas. We've also seen two tragic mass killings, one in Ohio and one in Texas, taking the lives of at least thirty-one people and injuring dozens more. Please keep the families of all of these people in your prayers and thoughts during our moment of silence. If you please join me. Any amendments to the agenda, Council? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of accepting tonight's agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Agenda has been approved. Thank you, gentlemen. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, Council, Tab 1 of your book, which was the minutes which you had before you, I think. We all saw an email copy of them later earlier.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Chris. All in favor of approving the minute of the consent agenda for tonight? Indicate by saying aye. Agenda has been approved. At this time, I'd like to join Peter Rasko on the floor while we recognize Dabney Shelton and Cynthia Mills for five years of service and Wes Haskett, our town planner, for ten years of service. If you'll come forward, I'll meet you down below.
So, Dabney, congratulations on panel five, who has taken all the service. Cynthia, all the smiles and everything that go on, remember that. We will be with us in five. Mr. Baker West has been with town ten years. He has been with West's previous plan, the county, John Campbell, and also served as a manager of the city. Also, like I said, back last year, February the 6th, the council of the county, Wes, in the position of the town manager of town plan, in September of 2018, Wes commenced the school, office, county, and fiscal administration course, attended that with a week-long, eight-week-long sessions over a period of eight months, and spent a hundred fifty hours training the oven and called a big package. So, thank you, Wes. All are very grateful.
It's an honor to thank these good people for their service to our town. We're so blessed and so lucky to have people who are willing to work with us the way they do, do the job they do for us. Thank you. This time, I'll understaff reports. I'll call on Mr. Haskett again for his report.
Thank you again, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I have a very brief report for y'all tonight for the month of July, 2019. There were seven zoning permits issued, thirty-six building permits issued. Those consisted of two additions, three remodels, four repairs, two accessories, and twenty-five others. There are currently sixteen single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees that was collected in July was $7,392.57. Lastly, I'll just touch on the town planning board. They'll be meeting again on August nineteenth here in the Pitt Center, 5:30 PM. The board will be continuing its discussion of the town's current requirements for building height and fill, and they will also continue its discussion of a special events and occupancy limitation ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions, Council? Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This time, I'll call on David Cole, our police chief. Good afternoon, David.
Afternoon, Mayor, members of council. The July 2019 police report, officers handled thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight calls for service for the entire month of July. Under the incidents, which are the crimes that were actually reported, we had a total of twenty-six, as you can see the breakdown. Three of those were assaults, three were breaking and entering. There were three larcenies. One was a vandalism. We had eight that were drug-related. One was regarding a weapon. We had one driving while intoxicated, one alcohol violation. A found property. We had two domestics, hit-and-run accident, and for a total of twenty-six. Under the criminal arrest, one for the assault, fire for the drugs, two people were arrested for the weapon, and one for the driving while intoxicated and the alcohol violation, for a total of ten. We had eleven reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of July. Officers conducted a hundred-and-sixty-six traffic stops for July, and out of that, they wrote fifty-seven written citations and another ninety warning citations. And our community resource officer was also very busy and handed out a hundred-and-sixty-three ordinance violations for July. Any questions? Thank you.
I would ask you a quick question. How does this compare, this last month of July compare, for example, to last year or the year before? Do you have that information?
Jennifer is off on vacation this week, and I knew you would ask something. And I didn't have time to double-check that. But I can tell you, just in my gut, it's been a lot busier this year compared to last year, especially the traffic.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. This time, I'll call Edlin Barker, our fire chief. Good afternoon, Ed.
Good afternoon, everybody. So, for the month of July, the fire department responded to a total of a hundred and one calls. Three building fires, one brush fire, fifty-seven EMS calls, three motor vehicle accidents with injuries, three without injuries, one baby locked in a vehicle, one stalled elevator, four surf rescue, one gasoline or flammable liquid spill, one carbon monoxide incident, five general service calls, two assist the police, seven public service, one authorized burning, three standby for different departments, five fire alarms, and one citizen complaint, which was a fire hydrant overgrown, which we took care of pretty quickly. I would say that a hundred and one is a record number of calls in one month for us. So, I know I keep repeating it every month, but I just want you to be aware that calls are really climbing. So, again, this is summer, so it's normal for us to be high like that, but we were the fourth busiest on the entire county this month. This month, we were the fourth busiest in the entire county, so obviously KDH being first, but anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Council? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. This time, I'll call the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As y'all know, this is the last report I'll be giving to you, as I'll be departing at the end of this month. I did want to report to you on three items tonight. One is regarding the East Dogwood Trail walking path that you approved as part of your budget back in June and as per your July 9th directive for staff to seek bids for its construction. All property owners on both sides of the street were again notified of your actions by letters that we sent out on July the 12th. Subsequent to that, the town engineer and town staff met with any property owners of budding the path who still had questions and concerns about any of the design details. The plans were again tweaked, as per your direction, to address public safety and owners' concerns, and they were posted on the town website. The plans and specifications will go out for bid this Thursday, October the 8th. Since this will be formal bidding under state law, if we get three bids, they would require us to get three bids, and the bid opening would be September 15th. If we do get those three bids, then that would be in time for your September meeting for approval of a contract. The plans and specs are being advertised, as required by law, for formal public bidding. The second item I wanted to run back, report to you, the surveys and subsurface investigations for all the streets covered in the capital improvement, infrastructure improvement plan that you adopted for the upcoming, for the current fiscal year are underway. They're underway for all the streets with anticipation that East Dogwood, per your directive, would be the first one to be bid out and construction start on. The third item is the beach survey results that Aptum, your coastal engineer, is compiling as we speak, been reported that would come to you in mid-September. So, that would be when the, that firm would be available to come and make a presentation and present those to you. So, I just conferred with him yesterday. So, those are the three items I wanted to report to you. I thank you, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them on town operations.
Excuse me. Peter, would you repeat that, the last comment about Aptum?
Yes. They are, the search, the survey results are being compiled as we speak, and they should be here by mid-September.
Thank you.
I have one question. What's the survey activity going on over at the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and East Dogwood Trail?
Could be the East Dogwood, the right-of-ways for East Dogwood Trail would be the only activity I know of that it could be.
They've been over there two days this week. I was just curious while they were there.
Don't, it could be any number of things. If it's not our, if it's not our contract's array, I wouldn't know. I don't know who that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I have a question. Can you repeat again the dates these go out to, the walk-away, plans go out to bid and then when the bid process closes?
Yes. They'll go out for bid that's coming Thursday, August 8th. If we get three bids in, the bid opening will be September 5th. If we get three bids, then you'll be able to take that up at your September meeting for contract award. If we don't get three bids, then we'll have to go back out for bid again, and you'll have to take it up at a subsequent meeting. Since this is formal bidding, the council would have to approve a contract based on those, on the bids.
Thank you, Peter. I want to take just a few minutes, if I may, to recognize Mr. Rasko for his service to our town. I had the opportunity early on and privileged to work for Peter in completing the first phase of our canal dredge project and, under his leadership, seeing the successful dredging of our entire canal system. Peter's attention to detail, his budgeting and administrative skills and foresight have played a key role in our being able to maintain an aggressive street rebuilding program, completing a modest but essential beach nourishment program, project, and with his legal expertise, being able to complete the dredging project mentioned earlier because there were some legal issues involved in that. Peter has consistently delivered a balanced budget with no tax increases to our residents during my entire term as your mayor, almost six years. His concern for the welfare of our exceptional town staff, particularly during these past three and a half years, is a credit to his character and his integrity. I'm proud to have worked with Peter and proud to consider him a friend. He will be sorely missed by many of us. Peter, I want to wish you every success and good fortune in this next chapter of your life, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Sheila, for getting that up here. In just a moment, I'm going to open public comment, but I want to, I just want to remind everyone who's going to speak tonight that we allow you three minutes, and that's normally adequate to cover most of what we talk about, but I'll keep an eye on that, and Sheila will too. I'd like to remind each of you that speaking tonight, that not agreeing with someone with something that a speaker says during their time to speak does not give you the right or me the right to demean their credentials or their qualifications. Let's just show some consideration for everybody who has something they want to say. I'll also remind you that when you speak, you speak to council, and we're the ones that we're going to take action on what you're trying to have, what you're trying to get across to us. So, I thank you. With that, I'll call on the first.
Mr. Mayor, before you do start the public comments, I'd like to echo your comments about Mr. Rasko. I have said it publicly before, and there are those in town that will take it further back than what I, I've only been in town since ninety-six, but people will take it back to the mid-eighties or even before that says, and they'll say that Peter Rasko is the best town manager we've ever had. And I think that's reflective of him also, but it's through his staff also, because I also think that overall, the team that he has assembled and worked while he's been here has been the best team that the town has ever had. That's not to disparage anybody that worked here previously, but overall, Mr. Rasko, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Connors. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
At this time, I'll call on Craig Hurd. Good afternoon, Craig.
Craig Hurd, 378 Seals Trail. Mr. Mayor, town council, I spoke to you a few months ago regarding a lot that my wife and I own next door to our home. We purchased this lot twenty-one years ago as an investment, and have been paying taxes on it ever since. It's a viable lot. This is not a small lot. It's over twenty thousand feet in area, which meets the building requirements for this district. Surprisingly, a few months ago, we were told that it is a non-conforming lot and can neither be built on and sold. We have been paying taxes on a lot that, according to this, is worthless, but I can assure you the taxes we've been paying are not a worthless amount. What really baffled us is that it cannot be built on or sold simply because we live next door to it. If we live two lots away, it could be built on and sold. One would think that a lot's viability would be determined by factors other than who lives next door to it. At a recent planning board meeting, Mr. Neal, a member of the board, offered an explanation of how the situation has gotten to this point. He said the initial intent was to protect the oceanfront. In doing so, they cast a large net that caught a number of outliers, or as we are commonly referred to, unintended consequences. He added that they are now tasked with the job of providing exceptions for those of us who were snared unintentionally. You've been presented with a group of exceptions recommended by the planning board. Whether you consider these in total or individual, I hope that you will give capital consideration to these recommendations and the impact that these rules will have on those of us who are labeled outliers. Of particular interest to us is exception number two, which addresses lots owned by an adjacent homeowner. Council, my wife and I cannot afford to seditely buy while this town, of which we have been residents and taxpayers for twenty-three years, totally evaporates our $150,000 investment simply because we are an unintended consequence. This matter has been in limbo for a number of months, and I think it is time for you to make a decision so that those of us who have been so egregiously affected by this ordinance can decide and prepare for our next course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Is it Arthur Gormley?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I couldn't, I can relate to that.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Arthur Gormley, and I'm here on behalf of my six brothers and sisters and myself to ask you to consider what I'm about to say on the same topic this gentleman spoke on. The two specific properties that I'm talking about are 226 Wax Myrtle Trail and 224 Wax Myrtle Trail. 226 was a home that my mother purchased thirty-two years ago, and it has a home on it. 224 Wax Myrtle Trail is right next door, and it's a separately-platted property that has been vacant. About twenty-some years ago, my mother died and left 226 Wax Myrtle Trail to the family. About twenty years ago, my brothers and sisters and I purchased 224 Wax Myrtle, the adjacent property. The idea was that we would enjoy the wooded view. Number two, we thought it was a sound business decision to look at the appreciation of the property so that as the property became older and tired, we would have sufficient funds to do a renovation. And third, we thought buying the lot next door was a prudent business move because we could make sure there was no dumping on it, we could keep an eye on our assets, right? So, that brings us to today. The family has realized that this property was tired. So, beginning in June of this year, we began a very extensive exterior and limited interior renovation. I invite you to look at 226 Wax Myrtle Trail. We're very proud of what we're doing for the neighborhood. We're spending $80,000. I personally have spent $40,000 of my retirement money, don't feel sorry for me, but nonetheless, I'm on a fixed income, and retired. That money's not going to come back to me. We thought it was going to come back to me. The other $20,000 comes from an assortment of siblings. We thought it was going to come back to me through the sale of 224 Wax Myrtle, which we went to sell, only to find out that we can't sell it. That happened just a couple of weeks ago. So, the question is, how do we get our money back? We'd have to sell the house that we're improving to get my money back. It doesn't make any sense. The other is, we'd have to put a second mortgage on it. A couple of my siblings still have children in college. They're very often late with their annual assessment, and to put the burden of a second mortgage, even split among six siblings, seven siblings, is, it's really a burden for us. And to that end, I just ask the council to consider that we really thought we were doing a prudent thing by buying a lot right next door that we could keep track of. If we had purchased any other lot in Southern Shores, we wouldn't be in this situation. We have never rented. We don't intend to rent, and my siblings and the thirty-three grandchildren and children and great-grandchildren, thank you for your consideration.
Brad Sanford. Good evening, Brad.
My name is Brad Sanford. I'm with Arthur Gormley. To give you some background, my wife and I were part of the same family of seven families that owned this property, 226 and 224 Wax Myrtle Trail. My wife and I have managed it all these years. The seven families, we don't rent it. We, it's used all year. We have a lottery. We divide it up. We each get seven weeks, and somebody's here all year long. We started this renovation program a few weeks ago with the intent to sell the lot, use the money to pay back those members who have loaned the money to our family to make this happen. And all of a sudden, we find out, I've had several interested buyers in the lot. I just put up a "for sale by owner" sign, didn't go to Realtor, and I've got several buyers lined up, ready to pay full price, cash, and close as soon as I can make the lot available. And I just found out I can. So, we're in a dilemma of how to sell the lot, how to recoup the money we're spending on the property, and to keep our family investment going. We've been doing this all these years as a family. People are astounded. These seven families are still speaking to each other and doing this, and it's worked out really well. And we were so excited about this, we restructured our agreement to provide for the next generation of kids to take over and try and make it as painless for them. We thought selling the lot would remove a potential problem from the family, so they wouldn't be arguing, because we've already had some of that, well, I want to buy it to retire on. They want to buy it to, you know. We decided it's best off, just get it out of the family, use the money, fix up the house, and then the next generation can have a new house, ready to go. We're in a dilemma. We're in a financial dilemma now, and we can't wait, I mean, we can't, and we can't absorb the cost to put a second, put a first mortgage on it. We don't have any mortgage on it. We pay for the operation of this thing out of our own money. We've been paying taxes on this lot worth $130,000, assessed at $130,000 all this time. And I haven't told, other than Arthur, any of the other siblings about this dilemma. So, I'm hoping when I do tell them, I can tell them some good news. So, I'd appreciate anything you guys can do to help us out of this jam. We understand the intent of the zoning ordinance you put in place, believe me. I understand it really well. As the first gentleman said, we're just an unintended bad consequence. Anything you can do to help us get out of this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Norm St. Laurent. Good evening, Norm.
My name's Norm St. Laurent. I live on 63 Hickory Trail, and I want to thank the council members and the mayor and Peter Rasko for the great job you guys are doing. Peter, I had a sign put up on our street, Hickory Trail, of a man walking a dog. A lot of us walk our pets on that street, and hopefully, the sign that Peter put up, people are paying attention to it. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about myself because it's relevant and pertinent to an initiative that's going on on Hickory Trail. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, spent twenty-two years in the Army. I got wounded in Vietnam, spent five and a half months in the hospital, I'm the recipient of the Silver Star, the Bronze Star, with V for Valor, the Purple Heart, and a number of other awards. I mention that because I'm very careful about what I do, anytime, because of the time I spent in the hospital, I still have nightmares about that and a few other things. But one of the things I want to mention to you, I was walking myself on Hickory Trail here two weekends ago, and a car came that close to me. I wasn't on the road, I was on the side of the road, and with the volume of traffic, and certainly the police chief knows about the traffic, and you know about the traffic. So, that's my background, and my wish and my vote today is going to be, my vote, personal vote, is going to be to support an initiative that's going on in Hickory Trail to try to mitigate and minimize the amount of traffic on there. We get young mothers walking their kids up with strollers. We got dads riding kids on bicycles and all kinds of things, and the traffic is just never-ending, never-ending, never-ending. There's two- There's two truck drivers that live on Woodland, I don't know their names, they were racing down Hickory Trail in their pickup trucks. Somebody knows their name, they mentioned it to me one time. But the traffic is really bad, and the policemen, the police do a good job of what they need to do. But I think we need to go a step further with this whole scenario here. And Dave Watson has had an initiative, I support his initiative, I think he's going to talk to it tonight. Thank you again for your service and helping us out in the community. Peter, thank you. You've done a great job.
Thank you, Norm. Eda Lannuti? Good evening, Eda.
I want to thank mayor and council for putting up with us. Because I live at 54 Hickory Trail, and we need to do something. I can sit out on a Saturday morning with a cup of coffee and count 96 cars in one hour, going in one direction. I'm not even counting in both directions. I'm not sure if it was, I think it was last 4th of July, and I was working, and I came home, and because of the traffic on the Duck Road, I came past the Kitty Hawk School. When I got to the Little Bridge on East Dogwood, it was, the traffic was stopped, and I'm thinking, gee, I wonder what's going on? Oh, it's, I'm sure it's just the stop sign. No, because when I made the turn onto Hickory, I looked at the clock on my dashboard, it took me 11 minutes to get from the corner to my house because the place was a parking lot. And I mentioned this to the mayor when he came into the shop that I was working at. And he said, yes, and then they go on, then they go on Hillcrest. And because it was so jammed up, they were getting out of their cars and using the porta-potty of a new construction. And some of them weren't that nice. They were actually using the bushes. Well, I mentioned it to a police officer who comes in for lunch, and I said, you know what? You couldn't have gotten an ambulance or a fire truck down that street. And the response was, oh, yeah, we could. But you know what? It shouldn't have to be that way. It shouldn't have to be that way. I understand that it's Saturday and Sunday, but we can't, we can't go anywhere on a Saturday and Sunday, because you can't get back. And, I mean, you can't go visit friends in Southern Shores, because you can't get back. And all I know is, the seconds, the next weekend when it happened, I looked as soon as I could see clear, I put on my four ways, leaned on my horn, pulled out of the line, and went straight in the opposing lane, and got to my driveway and hung a left. This has got to be taken care of. We are citizens, we need to do something with this road. And we just replaced this road, what, maybe 10 years ago? It's already falling apart on the edges because, like the gentleman, like Norm said, people are, you're this close, you're this stinking close. It's just not fair. It's just not fair. So, y'all are, anyone's invited from council to come and sit in my porch on a Saturday morning, get there early, because the traffic starts really early. And I will gladly give you coffee and make you a little tasty snack for breakfast. But, yeah, no, you guys have to, you have to do something. It's just not fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eda. Matthew Neal? Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, council. Matthew Neal, 163 Wax Myrtle Trail. I'm somewhat unprepared, so I wanted to make a quick comment on item 6A. I was happy to see it come back up on the agenda this evening, and I hope that the council deliberates on each and every one of these exemptions and discusses, hopefully scheduling a public hearing. As you heard from members in the audience tonight, we just keep adding people that maybe we haven't caught in these exemptions. I think Mr. Sanford and his brother-in-law would be covered under one of the exemptions already prepared and voted on 5-0 by the planning board, but we have Mr. Burden sitting catty-corner to him that has not mentioned any of the exemptions. So, as far as we've made good progress, and the planning board has adopted, or has sent it up to you with their approval, I think you should deliberate tonight and hopefully schedule a public hearing on what your deliberations come from. But also remember Mr. Burden and some of the other outliers that this net has caught, and maybe direct the planning board to narrow scope in the future, so it doesn't look towards the entire town, but maybe towards the core of the issue that we sought to address originally. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anne Schurzma? Good evening, Anne.
Good evening, council. Mr. Asko, Ms. Kane, Anne Schurzma, 69 Hickory Trail. I am speaking just to support a petition that David Watson circulated on Hickory Trail where I live, or to homeowners on Hickory Trail and Red Bay Lane. David will explain the initiative to you. I believe it's a start. He's proposing a dead end on Hickory at Hillcrest. And I would like to say that I signed it knowing that I personally may not benefit from it, because I'm going to be moving to Beechtree Trail later this fall. But I do think something has to be done about the traffic, and if it's done in increments, this is one way to start. This is the absolute worst traffic I have ever seen in 30 years of living and visiting the Outer Banks. Last Sunday, when I went out at 1:00 p.m., there was actually traffic backed up from Sea Oats or Hillcrest, wherever they back up from on Duck Road, in front of my house, which is at Hickory and East Dogwood, down East Dogwood, up South on South Dogwood. It was that far. I've never seen it that bad. I then went out to the main intersection at 158 and South Dogwood. There was no traffic on 158. It was smooth sailing. Everybody was turning into the cut-through route, presumably because they're being told to go there by their GPS and their navigation apps. I was astounded. I actually can sit in my house and hear the directions being said by Suri or whomever, turn left on Hickory Trail. You know, this is what everybody's following now. They're not adhering to the main route. They're not staying on the thoroughfare. So, I would like to make that point, that it has become considerably worse in just the past few years. And I think Chief Cole's comments about the number of incidents attest to that as well. Other people from Hickory Trail are going to be saying something about the petition. We are very mindful that what we're proposing could have some adverse effects on other people in the neighborhood, the dunes and elsewhere. But I think it's time to get started thinking about how can you address it in increments. And otherwise, I'd like to say that, if you do not know, Southern Shores currently has three sea turtle nests on the beach, which is so cool and just fabulous. And two of them will be hatching in September, one should be hatching any day now. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for sharing that about the sea turtles, Anne. Ellen Barbero? Good evening, Ellen.
My name is Ellen Barbero. I reside at 51 Hickory Trail. I have been there, living there approximately 20 years, paying taxes, et cetera, et cetera. I have concern about the weekend. Saturday and Sunday, I don't make any plans, because if I get out, I can barely get back into my house, or vice versa. I do have some concern, listen, I'm an old lady, and if I needed an emergency vehicle, I'm still trying to figure out how they're going to get to my house when there's the traffic backed up and unable to go. And I know you say you're going to get in, but I don't know how many cars you're going to wreck. I do appreciate the time that I'm allowed to speak to you, and I love Southern Shores, and I hope we can alleviate this traffic problem.
Thank you. David Watson? Good evening, David. Good to see you again.
I'm going to read off my phone. My name's David Watson, and I'm a resident at 56 Hickory Trail. Hickory Trail has become a very busy road because it has morphed into a bypass from NC-12. It is used by departing visitors and business vehicles which turn on Hickory Trail from NC-12, proceed down East Dogwood Trail toward the intersection of South Dogwood and 158, hoping to outpace the traffic on the traditional route. I presented the mayor and the commission with petitions signed by owners and parcels on Hickory Trail and Red Bay Lane to dead-end Hickory at Hillcrest to prevent the situation from continuing. The request, if granted, will have additional benefits to the town and residents. During the summer weekends, we have a massive amount of traffic going to Duck and Corrala. For us, most of the traffic during the summer weekend, excuse me, starts at the intersection of South Dogwood and 158 at Kitty Hawk School. The traffic rolls down South Dogwood in waves as the traffic light allows, then on to East Dogwood and Hickory Trail, up Hickory to Hillcrest, then in accordance with the GPS, God knows where it goes. It goes all over the three dune roads and elsewhere. The traffic is not helpful to our visitors or to our neighborhoods. The dead-ending of Hickory will give us the opportunity to guide the summer traffic on Dogwood back to NC-12 at the Dogwood Light with the assistance of barriers and helpful police officers. This would be very similar to going to a large event, like a football game, et cetera. This will keep the traffic on NC-12 and out of the neighborhoods where it just doesn't need to be. I believe that these petitions underscore the severity of the situation on Hickory Trail. We are hopeful that you can grant our request, we can further discuss it at this meeting. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, David. This time I'll close public comment. I would thank all of you who spoke tonight, though, it's been very helpful, getting your feedback. Item 6 under New Business Council to reconsider council's tabling action of July the 9th, 2019, and reschedule a public hearing at a regular meeting of September the 10th, 2019 to consider planning board recommendation of ZTA 1809 PB01. This is a zoning text amendment to amend Southern Shores Town Code, Section 36-132, regulating of structures and uses non-conforming. This was requested by Mr. Connors, and I'll ask him to explain his, what he wants, and have a motion for us possibly. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get straight to the point. I want to make a motion to reschedule a public hearing and council discussion and/or action at the regular meeting of the September 10th, 2019 Town Council to consider the planning board recommendation of ZTA 1809 PB01, and that the town attorney prepare for council discussion a separate ordinance that addresses only the tear-down of a single structure located on two or more non-conforming parcels of land, and then building two or more structures on non-conforming lots.
Do I have a second to that motion, council?
I'll second it.
Chris, a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss a little bit. We've been working on this for a while, and I know the planning boards are working hard, and part of the challenge has been every time, every time we get close, we identify some new people who are left out. And that's not the fault of the town attorney or the planning board, I think the intentions are there. But the truth of it is, the ordinance is written such that there's no choice that there will always be people left out. While I'm not able to vote on it in the motion, in the hearing coming up, on the advice of council, I strongly believe that we need to just repeal this. I think that we've created hardships for folks, and I don't think we meant to, but they're there, and we're hearing from them. And my preference would be that council, and I'd ask the four of you, because I'm not, I'm not going to be voting on it, just simply repeal it. It was a mistake, we tried, and I don't think that, I respectfully say to Mr. Connors that even the idea of trying to get to the core of the problem, I worry that we're still going to have problems. So, let's solve it, let's repeal it. In fact, our attempts to solve it is actually making the problem worse than it was before. So, that's just my thoughts. And clearly, there's folks who are injured by this, and so if we can bring it up sooner, if the rest of council can kind of, as a group, come up with a consensus, that's fine. But as somebody not voting and kind of outside in, I say make it go away, because this has been a problem.
I tend to agree, and that's the point of asking the town attorney to go ahead and draft something up, to address only the problem. But overwhelmingly, the purpose of this motion is to get the public hearing and hopefully council action on the exceptions that we have recommended by the planning board. We need to do something, though. It's either repeal it or pass what we got and continue to work on it. And that would be the point of the town attorney's draft, to see what if we did repeal it and replace it with what the original problem was. This thing got way out of hand, way too fast, by trying to address all non-conforming lots in town. But anyway, the motion here is to bring up a public hearing and discussion of the recommendations of the planning board, rather than wait until December.
Any further comment?
Yeah. I have no problem with your motion to bring it back up for discussion at the September meeting. I'm not sure I understand the second part of your motion.
The second part of the motion is to direct the town attorney to draft up an ordinance that addresses only the tear-down of one structure on two non-conforming lots, and then splitting those two non-conforming lots apart and building two houses. In other words, look at the original problem. We're not going to be able to pass that at the next meeting, because I, procedurally, I think this is going to have to go to the planning board. And that's why it's important that we go ahead and, in my opinion, pass the exceptions that we have, the first part of the motion, that we'll have a public hearing on. We can pass that, give immediate relief to aggrieved parties here in town, and then we can have that discussion about repealing it and going back to what the original problem was.
In my looking at Fred, to support his motion for, like I said, even though I'm not a voting member, the core of the problem is when people, these are platted separate lots with less than 100 feet. And when the house straddles that property line, that's what we're trying to prevent, because they're really trying to break those apart. When we have cases like we've heard about where they've developed it, they've got a valid building permit on one portion, and they just want to develop the other part, those people are being penalized. The hard part comes is when you have three lots, or four lots, or five lots. How do you deal with that? And so, I don't, while I don't disagree with Jim's assertion, I still think you're going to find issues where the house maybe is in a setback or something like that. It gets really fussy quickly, but maybe that's a step forward.
Go ahead, Gary.
Let's have a question. I'm hearing two motions, more or less, when you're directing the attorney to, he did that, and the ordinance that we have in place right now, where people have one structure on two, one lot, and they want to split it into two lots. That was his direction on what we put in place. Is that not correct, Ben, or am I wrong? Talk to me.
There's a little more history there.
Right. Right.
There was an initial direction to do that and the board actually considered an ordinance that would have just dealt with that and decided, I can't remember if the planning board decided, then recommended, or if y'all just decided not to take it up. But then, as more development was happening contrary to this, you adopted what you adopted last September to essentially stop it in its tracks while you did what you're doing now, which is reconsidering. And in that process, the reconsideration could have taken multiple paths. It could have taken a from-the-bottom reconsideration or it could have taken poking holes in the net, making exceptions for outliers who you didn't mean to catch with the shutdown last September. In general, that's the choi, that's the path that it has taken. So, what would happen under Mr. Connors' motion is that part's already gone through the planning board. It would come back to you for a public hearing in September. You could vote on it. You could make minor changes, but you couldn't make major changes without sending it back. But the part that I would do is probably revisit what I prepared before, probably sometime in last, early last summer is when that would have happened and look at that, see if there's any changes to make now that we've learned all sorts of new things about lots in town. But I don't expect that there would be a lot to change based on what Mr. Connors' motion would be. And then we would bring that back. Y'all could discuss it and then direct it to go through the planning board process or not if you wanted to essentially restart the process from the bottom. But that, that's that little step in the history. The current door-closing ordinance that was drafted and adopted in September of last year covers that issue, but it also covers other issues. It does not just cover that issue, but it covers that, that issue very clearly.
Mr. McDonald, when you mentioned two motions, in effect, yes.
Right.
And so, I'm ready to break that apart into two motions.
No, you, I just had a question on it. And I'm, I got follow-up for Ben. Okay, PB, and we never discussed it, eighteen oh nine PB oh one. Does that, and I've got chair and vice-chair and planning board members, does that hit the majority of exceptions that we're looking at as far as correcting?
It hits the majority of exceptions that we're aware of, which I can't imagine that there's, you know, there's a subset of lots that are non-conforming. Then there's a subset of those lots that are owned by multiple people. And then there's a subset of those lots that you didn't mean to catch. And it gets narrower and narrower and narrower. And as you've got five and six exceptions, the chances of more exceptions that you didn't mean to catch are getting less and less and less. And we're not talking about coming from, you know, millions down to hundreds of thousands. We're talking about coming down from, I can't remember how many lots are in town, but a majority of them probably aren't non-conforming. And then there's a group that are non-conforming and, and it just gets narrower and narrower. So, I, I can say that it's clearly a majority. It might be all of the exceptions we've heard about. I'm not sure, there were a couple that are brought up tonight that I haven't done, that I hadn't heard about before, but they still might be covered by what's there. I'd have to look at it and look at the details. But of the ones that we were aware about before we walked in here, I think it covered all of them except for maybe one. And I, and there's a chance it covered that one as well. So, I think it covers most of what we're aware of.
Okay. But without this, without this ordinance being passed, the people who spoke tonight are apparently out in the dark. They don't have any, they have no recourse.
Well, they don't have, they don't have no recourse, but this is probably the best path for the quickest recourse. They could also seek a text amendment for their individual exception. They may be able to seek a variance depending on the situation. But to say they have no recourse isn't, isn't clearly the case. But the quickest recourse and the most foundational recourse that would solve a number of problems at once would be, is for you to consider and if you decided to, pass what the planning board has recommended.
I think that's the proper thing to do because we should not be putting this off on the residents to have to fill out applications and, you know, file for variances or possibly get attorneys or anything that we know about these exceptions. We should.
And I agree with you, Jim, but I think that the public should know that they do have that option.
Yes.
If, if in fact, they don't fit in this leaky umbrella we've got here. If you don't fit under that and you're, and you're not protected by that, you do have the option of going to Town Hall and saying, "I want to file a ZTA just for my property." So, that's a, that's a step I don't want you to have to take. I don't think anybody wants you to have to take that step, but it is, it is available to you as a, as a, as a property owner in Southern Shore.
And let me clarify that it would be a ZTA to cover the situation that's associated with your property because it wouldn't necessarily apply to just your property. It might apply, it might apply to other properties as well. The text amendment process is going to apply to everybody in that zoning district if, if the requirements are met. It's different than a variance. A variance is just going to apply to your property. But variances are, they're always possible, but they're not necessarily likely in these cases.
Hey, Ben, I've got a question. I think I'm like the rest of you. I don't want to see anyone get penalized, hurt, or anything just because they own a non-conforming lot. But is there a way you can make it, these five options more comprehensive, broaden the language such that more people will be included in that category so that we don't have to have people coming every other meeting with individual cases and we have to change the ordinance every time we come, turn around because then it's got to go back to the planning board and it takes a lot of time. And I can really empathize with the speakers tonight. I mean, they want to sell the lot and they can't do it. And now they got to wait until September or longer. And we need to streamline the process. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but the audience needs to understand the process.
One thing that's important is that the ordinance that was passed last September didn't make your lots non-conforming. Your lots were non-conforming back in two thousand or whenever the setback, the width requirement of a hundred feet was adopted. What's different is what you can do with those non-conforming lots. That's what changed in September. To make it broader, to take into account exceptions that we don't know exist, is a concept, probably a better concept of starting from the bottom. And I think that may be what Mr. Connors is doing, but the trouble for me consistently has been, I can solve a lot of problems, but I got to know what the problem that you're trying to solve is. And when I do that, I get direction from y'all about what the problem is. And where the current ordinance came into play was, the problem was everybody, people were developing these lots too quickly and it needed to stop and there needed to be breaks to put on while there was reconsideration. And I think that the process of picking exceptions is a decent way to deal with that. If you're going to broaden it and try and look at it from a broader perspective, I think you want to start at the bottom and figure out what the problem is to solve. But I think in the meantime, just like in the meantime, that was the way to close the door, the list of exceptions that are in front of you is the way to encompass the most people that you did not mean to catch in the, in the, in the process.
So, I think we, I have a question on that. So, I understand broadening. So, your motion, the reason I ask that, I think what you want is this to come back at the next meeting. That's the quickest way is, if that's what I'm hearing Ben say.
Yes, so that we can, primarily so that we can vote to grant relief to the people who spoke tonight.
Right. And I understand that.
And, and they'll get that relief right then. Then we can have the discussion about repealing this and starting from square one again.
I don't know that we'd need to do that, but then, in the meantime, the planning board, if they've had other exceptions come to them, can't, do they have the ability to look at it between now and our next meeting and make minor changes to account for those, Ben? Or would they have to do it? Just trying to get it the quickest, Jim.
I understand what you're getting at here.
For example, somebody said there's another exception there.
They're going to keep popping up and.
Well, I'm not sure they are. I think he's, with what Ben did, honestly, and I've talked to him about it after, last time we met, it hits a lot more than just five in what he's included. I'm not sure there's another one, but could they make minor?
I would recommend that the less, there would be less risk in making minor changes or additional exceptions to take them on at a, at another, I mean, through a whole another process.
Okay.
I mean, but it's still, I mean, the, the planning board and this board are now very familiar with the process for considering exceptions to this non-conforming lots ordinance. And, you know, if, if the planning board came up with something that they're meeting near the end of the month, that's right, the third Monday is that when it typically is, the nineteenth. And if they came up with something and recommended it, I think you could set a public hearing in September to hear it in October if there were a couple more to add or one more to add. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest trying to take that recommendation and, and add it within a couple, you know, ten days to, to the current ordinance offhand. If I could go back to the office and sit down and read the ordinance and read the statute, I could tell you whether or not to do it, but right now, I'd say the least risky path is to.
To do this.
Just let it go through its own, own process.
Gotcha.
Procedurally, and the, I'm thinking fastest path to your guys' everybody's point here, could this board repeal it tonight?
No.
And, you could not. You'd have to go back to the.
A repeal is the same thing as an adoption of an amendment. You're amending, you're amending the zoning.
That's why I asked. I was trying to, because then in the meantime, you can work on the.
There is no accelerated process for repealing. It's, it's.
Rewrite.
You just treat a repeal as an amendment to the town code, so it has to go through the same process.
I was just thinking of that.
I'm good.
There's a motion on the floor, gentlemen.
So, this is coming back next month?
Yes. So that they can have a public hearing and we can hopefully pass and get them the immediate relief while we continue to have this discussion. I mean, it's, we all recognize there's going to be things that keep popping up, so let's maybe have a greater discussion, maybe cut straight to the root. But anyway, all in favor?
We've had a motion on the floor to go ahead and reconsider the tabling action and to bring it back again in, in September for further consideration. We've had a discussion about that. All in favor of Mr., Mr. Connors' motion? All five of us are in favor, I think I saw. Thank you. Motion's made and carried. Let's all move on to our consensus of council members, April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen special meeting and the mayor's communication to council on May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Adoption of a meeting schedule for future planning meetings on long-range planning and future beach budget consideration as previously submitted to the council members by the mayor. Some time ago, I got back, I got back to you with a list of, that I had compiled based on your, your information provided to me where I selected items for long-range consideration, long-range planning consideration based on the fact that the majority of you indicated those particular items. And they were such things as beach nourishment, future capital rehab if needed of the town buildings, capital apparatus and equipment needs of the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, town land use plan update, and a town-wide walking path system following in the footsteps of the East Dogwood Trail Path. I would make a motion that we set a special meeting for Tuesday, September the seventeenth at five thirty PM to consider the coastal engineers' beach survey results and all the other items submitted by council members relative to long-range planning. And the reason I picked that date is because we probably won't have the information back from the Abton people for, about the condition of our beach until just prior to that time. So, what I'd like to make you, have you do, counsel, for me is to, is to second my motion so we can go ahead and move forward with the discussion about it and then hopefully get it passed so we have a special meeting on the seventeenth at five thirty PM.
Seventeenth of August?
Seventeenth of September. We won't hear back according to what Peter just told us, the seating until sometime early September from Abton on our beach, our beach nourishment issue. And, and I think the reality is that the beach nourishment issue is, is the elephant in the room as far as cost and urgency to make a decision about it at some point. That's why I'd like to hold off until we have that information available to us and then sit down in a meeting and discuss that on the seventeenth of, of September. Did I have a second? I think I did.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion about that?
Yeah, I'd like to amend your motion. I think you need, and I think you've heard it loud and clear tonight, we need to add cut-through traffic as one of the planning projects.
That's, that's, that's good. I was going to ask if anybody wanted to add anything else to that, this discussion. That's fine. Cut-through traffic.
How about stormwater issues?
That's also good. I was going to mention that myself, actually.
I mean, that's probably, other than cut-through traffic, stormwater is a large issue out on twelve at times.
It's on twelve, but.
And actually back in the communities.
It's on twelve, what I'd, what I'd call nuisance-type flooding, there's no question about that. It's, it's not really hazardous flooding in most cases. A worse situation in my mind, a situation that exists on the avenues, from First Avenue, actually from Circle Pond, which is off Hickory and Circle Drive, all the way north to Twelfth Avenue. We have a really serious flooding problem there and bad storm events, especially rain events. We saw it a couple of years ago where the water was up two feet deep on, on, on some of those streets around, like, near, near Mockingbird, areas like that. And further up, Seventh Avenue, Fifth Avenue, you name them, they were flooded. You could, you could actually drive on some of those, on some of those avenues and look down and see if it's a constant, if it's a lake that ran about a mile, almost a mile long. There was no place you could, you could not see water. And I've talked to the Civic Association about this. Rod McGauley and I have been discussing this for some time. And I think we need to have a kind of a joint, joint approach to this where we, we know it, knowing that some of those ponds are on Civic Association property and belong to them, see if we can incorporate those questions into this whole discussion of stormwater management. So, I'd, I'd say let's keep, keep, put that on the agenda for, for sure.
Well, and you've got town-wide walking path system, which we've got that pretty much in place right now going, but I would say we might want to change that from just the path walking system to our capital improvement. I mean, our roads are deteriorating pretty quickly and, you know, we've actually increased our funds a little bit last year, but we haven't touched that. In the past ten to fifteen years, that's, that amount of money's been stable, but it's not been increasing. And we need to look at if we're going to include walking paths as a part of our system, you know, that's going to pull monies out of that fund, maybe re-analyzing what we're putting in there.
I think the walkway system, if they complete that on South Dogwood, the bulk of that is going to be done. What I'm hoping to discuss and bring attention to on a longer-range planning perspective is some of the crosswalks across NC-12, 158. There's some major deficiencies in some of those walkways and everything. And then just look at everything more comprehensively. Yeah, I don't see us spending another million dollars on another walkway another year. Once we get the South Dogway done, it, we're going to have a good backbone.
Well, that's why I said put it as a capital to be all-inclusive.
Well, for our long-range planning purposes, if we can keep this long, you know, the walkway system, that's what I'm hoping. walkway system, that's what I'm hoping to bring attention to. Not, not building any major more ones, but rather now taking what we've got and linking them together.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying to add that, because I think it's, the roads are valuable and it's clearly a trade-off, there's only so much money. However, I'll, I'll agree with Jim also that the paths allow mobility in, on some of these changeover days, but if we can't deal with traffic, we've got the ability to go out of the house. And maybe it's not big, big moves, maybe it's small moves, but what we're missing is that big picture. What are we trying to connect? Dogwood is easy, right? That's the easy one that we're connecting. But there's Hickory, there's no room on the side of the road to walk. If, if there's a sidewalk there, at least pedestrians are safe.
No, that's not, that's not the ball.
So anyways, that was, that was my thought, Jim.
Can I just say something to your future question?
I'll, I'll get you in a minute.
And Jim, I'm not disagreeing with you, but the money's in place, like you said, for the sidewalks.
I'm sorry, what?
The money is already in place for the sidewalks.
For the South Dogwood?
Right.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's pretty much the, the bulk, like you said, of...
Yes, but there are other things that go with a comprehensive walkway system. I mean, we might be able to spend a thousand dollars in a future year for some small signs that, you know, you are here and this is the walkway system we have in town. A more comprehensive, long-range planning thing might also be kind of getting together with the S.S.C.A. and C.P.O.A. and see where, first of all, where do you have walkways that link? And then where might some be added? It's not a long-range planning agenda item for the sake of big buck ticket items, you know, down the road. It's for taking what we got and, and pulling it all together for people. So, I, I mean, I, I, it's something that I'd like to discuss.
Does it matter whether it's under the CIIP or not? Or...
Doesn't matter, yeah.
So, maybe put the, maybe put the future, future pathway construction under, under the CIIP umbrella?
Maybe. Maybe you can get my point. My point is if you're adding infrastructure and you're not increasing your budget to cover it...
I, I'm not following you because I'm not talking about adding money to...
Capital projects.
You know, walkway completion program.
Well, it says, "Long-range planning and future budget considerations." I'm just saying, we've, we've already paid for South Dogwood or we've got that money If you're adding sidewalks, their capital, they come under the capital of projects.
If you're adding sidewalks, yes.
So, look at it as a whole, because what you're doing is adding more infrastructure, but you're not adding any more money to that part.
I don't agree with that.
Take care of it.
I, I think, though, that we're getting into the details of what we would be talking about at the September meeting. I'm just trying to advocate for keeping a line item on there so that we can look comprehensively at what we've got and what improvements we might make, like getting some action from D.O.T. These are not necessarily budget items that I'm looking at right now, because first, we have to develop a plan on what's important to us and then tie it to the budget. But first, we gotta set the budget, I mean, the planning priorities. This walkway infrastructure thing is a, almost a no-cost item at this, at this point. That's not where I'm trying to take that.
I think CIIP, maybe, maybe the middle ground is let's add CIIP and then they are tied together potentially in the future, but it's long-term, so let's add them both.
Are you okay with that, Jim?
You know, I think it's a fair thing to talk about.
So we're gonna, we're gonna bring this back up in September, seventeenth of September for, and we're going to conclude a, a discussion and hopefully an in-depth discussion about cut-through traffic. And we're gonna include a, a time in this, in this discussion for stormwater management and...
Is that in the three minutes?
And a townwide walking path system under the CIIP's domain.
Sure.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
One, one other item would be the marketplace to discuss. I mean, it, in the past couple of years, some things have been proposed there that haven't happened.
Right.
It's deteriorating and we might wanna look at if we would be open to doing something along with the owners to help them improve upon their infrastructure there or do something. I under, I understand that there may be another business coming in there in the next, or the announcement may be coming soon, that something else is gonna go in there, so I'd like to add the marketplace on there because it's the only business, really the business area that we've got, but making it a little more presentable as people come, come in.
I'm not sure it's...
And working with them.
I understand where you're coming from and I agree with your, your concerns about it. I'm not sure it's our place as a council to, to get involved in the private sector in that, in that, to that degree. I think it might be appropriate for a phone call, an inquiry, which I'm glad to do, but I don't think, I don't think we should take, make that a, a town agenda item, if you will, on a, on a long-range plan.
It's our business that, I mean...
Well, it's our business district, but it doesn't belong to us. It doesn't belong to us. If, if there's no further discussion, council, I'd call for the motion.
Well, let me ask you, are you amending the motion to include the items like the cut-through traffic?
I, I just, I was just saying that, to include the cut-through traffic and to include stormwater management.
I just wanna be sure it gets the visibility that it needs.
I think Sheila also has it in her, in her notes.
Okay, good. No problem.
All right. Thank you. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Now, you want us to have a, you have a word?
This is Edward Newton here, for Richard Trapp. In response to Mr. McDonald's saying about, well, there might be other options, I foolishly pulled into my driveway so I had...
I didn't say that, ma'am.
No, it's only not, is that me?
It was this, this...
It wasn't him.
It was sidewalk.
I was talking about sidewalks, but yes.
Oh, sorry. But you said something, they, counsel, okay? We'll just do this in one... I foolishly pulled face, you know, front nose into my driveway. And on Sunday morning, I'm trying to build a church, so I'm backing out. Now, people coming west on Hickory, they're leaving. They got all day to get on the train, right? Now, they can see my taillights, my backup lights, and I'm trying to get out of my driveway. I finally put the parking brake on, got out with the flag on track and asked the next car. Look, I'm trying to go to church. Would you please let me out of my driveway so I can go to church? I'm not being here waiting all, I'm not going over the bridge. Now, it's pretty damn bad when you have to stop trying to get out of your own driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, the next item of business is a motion to approve the planning board officers as elected by the planning board.
See?
I'm sorry, apologize. Back up, back up. Mayor made a mistake.
Historic landmark.
I got it. I'm, I just want, just wanna get you all out of here. Item C on the public hearing, the purpose of hearing is to designate LDA nineteen zero one, a landmark designation application submitted by Dave Mackey to designate one, two eighteen Ocean Boulevard as historic landmark. I need Chairperson Lee Whitely to speak to that. Here she is. Hi, Lee. I almost left you out, I apologize.
It's all right. I'll make it short and sweet. We met, whenever we met last in August, I believe it was, to look at the Mackey Cottage that was built in nineteen fifty-five for Howard and Claire Greaves. They designed it, but it's the epitome of a, of a Frank Stick-type flat top. It's at two eighteen Ocean Boulevard. We unanimously agree that it belongs in our historic, does, needs to be a historic designation program. It's, the original three-bedroom, two-bath structure remains intact. They did an addition, not an addition, but two annex bedrooms with outside entrances were added in nineteen sixty-nine when the Mackey family purchased the home. And the west screen porch was enclosed as a garage at that time. Like I said, we were all on board with this being designated as a historic structure in our program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Well, she had a... Do you think you would like to add to that? Mrs. Wood, thank you. We had someone sign up?
No one signed up.
Nobody signed up.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion, we approve it.
The ordinance designated the property and structure located at two eighteen Ocean Boulevard as historic landmark. Is that what you wanna make a motion, say? All right. Thank you.
What Lee, what Lee said...
Any further, any, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want, I just wanna say to the council that we helped the Mackeys draw their home at no cost, but if for the sake of, you know, similar to the other ones, we didn't, I didn't take any money for it. I oversaw the drawing, the documentation of it, but if council feels that I should refuse myself, I'd be happy to.
What's the, what's the consensus here, council?
All in favor?
Any problem with Mr., Mr.?
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right.
Except in a den. Just call for a vote, that's all. We're good.
All in favor of accepting this ordinance, designated the property and structure located at two eighteen Ocean Boulevard, historic landmark, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This time, council, I'd make a motion to approve the planning board officers as elected by the planning board in the person, Chairperson Elizabeth Morey and, and in the, in the, as the Vice Chairman, Andy Ward.
Second.
Need a motion? I made a motion. Thank you, second. Thanks for your second, Gary. Any, any discussion about that, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion's made and carried. No general public comment on the, there is somebody.
Two.
Somebody else wants to... Leo Holland. Hi, Leo, how are you this evening?
Good, good evening, Mayor. And town council, I just have a couple items. One, tomorrow from twelve to six is a Red Cross blood drive, which will be a holy drink, holy redeemer, so if you wanna come and donate some blood, they'll be willing to, to take it. And the other comment I had was, knowing that this is Peter's last meeting, when I learned of it, one, I was happy for his retirement. Second, I was disappointed, but I know you wanna move on with a different chapter in your life, so I wanna thank you not only for serving your country, but being a, a guiding light for our town. And we through some difficult challenges you had, and God bless you, you survived them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Good evening, Al.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. You know, just now, a few minutes ago, there was a discussion about, once again, a townwide walking path. And if we talk tonight and for how long about this sidewalk on South Dogwood. I feel that it was not properly, a hundred percent approached to all the residents in this town after discussions with the mayor and with the engineer, Mr. Hanneloff, to find out that the town, that a million-dollar project being built in this town is not ADA compliant. And it just felt that it should be noted that it is not and the residents of the town should know that it's not, especially since we have so many elderly in the town. And also, just to bring up everything that everybody else has said, the traffic this year has been horrendous. It doesn't seem like it's the people, the walkers, the bicycles, everything. It is just flat-out traffic. It has gotten just totally ridiculous. So, we have to, you know, I just felt that there was not full transparency by the town council to notify the residents of this town of how we were spending a million dollars of our money. And talked with the, the mayor today, and he's supposed to explain it a little bit better during his comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Early on, there was conversations about the trail, the South Dogwood Trail and the East Dogwood Trail, about trail width. And I, I made the statement on more than one occasion that I wanted the trail, if at all possible, to be ADA compliant in its width. The, the statement was never made that the trail would be ADA compliant for anybody, any handicap person. That was never the intent. And that we never, we never espoused that, never mentioned that, never, never advocated that. We said it was ADA compliant as far as width. The proposed, the proposed walking path on South Dogwood Trail is ADA compliant as to width. It may not be fully compliant as to grade and elevation changes, simply because of the terrain and that's an issue called feasibility. Can you really, can you really accomplish that with the space you have to work in? And we know we can't. So that addresses, I think, what Mr. Urely wanted, wanted to hear me say, as far as being transparent and telling you that we, we aren't advertising or trying to sell it as a totally ADA-compliant walkway. Let's see. Anyone else have anything else they would, like they had? Start with the, with the mayor pro town here.
I, I just wanna thank Peter. He's done, he's done a great job and I'm sure he's excited to relax a little bit and live his life and, and not live the town's life, but it's been a hard, it's been a hard slog, but I know, I know you got through it with a lot of patience, so thank you. And then, in terms of the mayor's comments about the ADA requirements, there, there is the technical in feasibility, there's some exceptions. So, for example, in Asheville, if you put a sidewalk in, you're on a mountain, so you have, you have to take some of these local considerations into effect. So it's, but as much as we can make it the width to meet it, we wanna do our best. And then that's all I've got.
Thank you, Chris. Gary, anything?
I'd like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
To Mr. Roscoe, Semper Peratus. When was very recently the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth birthday of the Coast Guard? I mention that because obviously Mr. Roscoe was a Coast Guard, but we've got a lot of Coast Guard in our community. They live in Southern Shores and throughout the other towns. They work in Nags Head, Oregon Inlet, Hatteras, Elizabeth City, so it's, I just felt kind of obliged to call out the Coast Guard.
Thanks, Jim. Fred, anything?
Yeah, I'm really glad to see people coming out and speaking up about the traffic problem during the season that we're currently experiencing. I encourage more people to come out and speak up, because I feel like this council has a duty to help protect the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens, and the council really needs to hear from you. And I think the people that have spoken tonight have made their point very clear. We need more people to do that, not just on Hickory Trail, but throughout the town where the traffic has become a, a real problem. So thank you very much.
Yes, that's good. Thank you. In just a few minutes, we'll be going into closed session to discuss a, an employee and a purpose, a purpose considering that qualifications, competence, performance in character of, of an employee. We will be coming back into open session after that meeting, just for a few minutes. So, I need a motion, council, for us to go into closed session.
Salute.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
All aye.
We're now in closed session. We're now in closed session.
I think you're playing a better can opener.
He's got a paper opener.
Can of worms opener.
You know where Wes is hiding Sheila?
Haskett's house.
We haven't got to say September the first, is that what you're reading?
Hold on, I got a text from Wes, it must be this morning.
What'd you say Sheila?
She's got a text.
He's got a text from Wes.
Okay.
I was thinking about that. I did think about that today.
There was a little more, not good. There was a little more.
I think it got stuck in the weeds. It's different.
Is anybody making a motion?
I don't. Sometimes, but I'm not just saying. Sometimes you learn as you go.
I don't consider how we're going to do the process.
I'm just going to say what you said. I'm going to go with that. I can discuss with him.
That's a fair point.
That's effective, it should not be in there. Second session, right? Town council is now back in open session. I move that council appoint deputy town manager Wes Haskett as interim town manager effective September the first, 2019, with an increased compensation of $250 per week. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Correction. You said two, $200.
I said $200 per week.
You said $200. Because she looked at me and I looked at her.
Yeah, 250, I'm sorry. I got the zero in front of the five. $200 per week.
And again, I second the motion.
Thank you, thank you Jim.
How long did, how long did you say he would be interim manager?
We didn't put a time on it. We talked about that earlier.
So he'll be appointed until another manager is appointed or until some other, something happens with this appointment?
My understanding was we would discuss that in the September meeting and decide if we're going to initiate the search for new town manager.
Sure.
Any, any other discussion?
I thought we were going to initiate the search to, for consulting firms tonight.
No. That was never agreed upon. It was talked about.
That's what we discussed.
If we couldn't do it in September, we might as well do it now.
We might as well do it now.
I don't disagree with Gary on this.
And bring it to the September, bring those, I thought we would, Jim and I were talking, I thought we were under the understanding that we would bring it to the September meeting, the consulting groups.
That's my understanding also. If you, if you want to do that, then after this motion, you'd make a motion to ask, ask the current manager, the soon to be acting manager, and the soon to be interim manager to bring you that information at your September meeting.
You're going to say that again.
Let's address the motion that's on the floor right now. I move that council appoints deputy town manager Wes Haskett as interim town manager effective September the first, 2019, with increased compensation of $200 per week.
$250.
I said $200, the second time I thought. And I have a second to that motion. I have a second to that motion, then we had some discussion about it. All in favor of that, of my motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Now, I need a second motion, if you'll help me once, Ben. With, with, as far as the timing of the search, the search, starting the search process.
It sounds like there are at least some on council who would like to direct the current manager, the soon to be acting manager, and the interim manager to bring back to you in September a list of consulting firms to consider for the process of going forward to hire, hiring, appoint a full-time manager.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Only that, that at that time, as we start talking about a search committee, we can get some answers on what requirements we would like to be fishing for.
Some, some parameters we'd like to stay within as far as hiring.
Yes. Let's deal with that next one.
But that, that'll come up at the next meeting.
It will.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So four, had four in favor and one opposed to that. Okay. Did you get that Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Any further business council? I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you Gary, all. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.